Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Council. Good morning, Council Wilson from abroad. I guess not abroad, so good morning, public joining us. I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting Together for November 22 to order at 9:30 a.m. I would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on Treaty Six and Eight Territories as well as Mati Region Four. This land is a territorial territory, meeting ground, gathering place, and traveling route, and home for the Denezah, Mahewak, Anashnabe, Secutbek, Stony Nakota, and Mati. Council, you have the agenda in front of you today. Are there any additions to the agenda? Barring none, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda. Councilor Waxer, all in favor? Agenda is approved. Moving on to the Committee of the Whole minutes from November 8. Is there any business arising from those minutes? Once again, I see no hands. Do I have a motion to do to? Yes, indeed. No, perfect. No business arising. Moving on to delegations, which I'm not sure we have any. I'm just going to zip through this. Agenda item six, correspondence. You have in front of you the quarterly RCMP report. And is anybody zooming in to talk about that? Okay, awesome. Maybe? Move over to Director Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall and through the council. Sergeant Bedezi submitted this report but is not attending the meeting. If if council does have any questions, Director Naidon is online. And should there be anything related to our operations that you may wish to ask, she could answer those. But this is purely an information report.
Thank you, Director Reed. Any questions? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. The question I was going to ask related to the overtime that was mentioned, that there is additional overtime due to the Chatham fire. And I guess my question would be, we build a certain amount more every year now for the RCMP policing. That overtime, is that being absorbed by the province, the federal government, the municipality, or is that passed on to Parks Canada?
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor, through to Counselor Melnick. My understanding is that the budget is inclusive of possible exceptions like this. And so there isn't an extra bill going to anyone. However, that is only my impression. I'll look to Director Naidon if she has anything to add. But really, that question would be better addressed to Sergeant Bedezi, and perhaps Director Naidon can do that at a future time. And there she is, Director Naidon.
Thank you, Director Reed. To your question, Counselor Melnick, I would suggest that the extra funding that we've been paying in the last couple of years goes towards rural policing in Alberta generally. Like, that funding is not necessarily associated to the services that we see in Jasper. So that is not where the money's coming from. But also, as Director Reed mentioned, I think that it is just part of our contract that we receive those services from the RCMP. And I don't anticipate we would see any additional funding required from the municipality. But also, in those incidents, they are in the same situation as us with sort of disaster recovery funding. So it doesn't mean the RCMP wouldn't go to other parties, such as the National Park or Adco, to try to recoup that funding. But that is a process that is internal to the RCMP, is my understanding.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick and Director Naidon. Anyone else have any comments or Counselor Waxer?
I just wanted to note that Sergeant Bedezi highlighted in the report that the community has consistently adopted and promoted proactive bicycle usage as an alternative form of transportation. And so I felt that that was, again, spoke a bit to our strategic priorities and was a positive note.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. I also saw that. That made me happy. Anybody else have anything they wanted to add or ask? I did have one observation, and I maybe would ask this. I'm not sure Director Naidon could answer. But it looks like crime stats have gone down, and I'm just curious. It's because things were really busy in 2018, 2019 pandemic, and maybe things are just getting back to where they are. But it looks like lots of prices have gone down, so seems good. Counselor Waxer?
I had a question, but I don't believe anyone in the room will have the answer. But it looks like we're down two officers at the moment. And I wondered if eventually we could find out if there was how long that was anticipated to be, and if that situation would likely resolve in the near future.
Thank you for that. If there are no other... Oh, Director Naidon. You look like the Mona Lisa now. That was mine.
Well, thank you for that. I just wanted to say that I meet quarterly with Sergeant Bedezi, and I can certainly bring those questions forward to him. I know that on the staffing front, the number of positions for the detachment versus how many positions we can actually staff. So recruitment and getting people to Jasper is something that they are dealing with as well. In addition to covering leads for vacations or parental leave and things like that is also part of the situation with their staffing. And as far as call volumes, I think, I don't know if that's true for the RCMP, but certainly what we're seeing from our first responders. So from a fire department perspective, the numbers are down, and that was solely due to the pandemic. And we were just a bit less busy, and that was reflected in the number of calls that our first responders went to.
Thank you, Director Naidon. There are no other questions or comments. Can I get a motion to receive this report for information? Counselor Callahan, all in favor? And report is received. Moving on to... Counselor Wilson, are you agreeing and receiving it for information? Okay, perfect. Frozen in a hands-up position. Moving on to new business, Agenda item 7.1, Planning and Development feasibility reports. I will pass it over to Director Reed to introduce this report.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall and through the council. So yes, the recommendation in front of you is that committee receive the planning and development feasibility report for information. Of course, the alternatives are that committee would direct administration to undertake additional research on the concept of municipal delivery of land use planning and development functions. I will read the RFD verbatim, but as far as the background goes, we can all remember that in the spring, council met with senior officials from Parks Canada, where it was agreed that we would pursue discussions and reviewing the agreement for establishing local government in the town of Jasper. And in the summer, on July 19, council passed a motion to formally request that land use and planning development approval power to be transferred to the municipality. And on November 1, council received correspondence from the CEO of Parks Canada stating that Parks Canada is open to considering the possibility of such a transfer. So administration has retained Mr. Albert Flutman of Localis Consulting to provide an assessment of what is likely to be involved with the municipality taking over planning and development functions from Parks Canada, with a specific focus on organizational change and budget implications. And really, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Mr. Flutman of Localis Consulting on your screen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. It's a privilege to serve the municipality in undertaking this research and developing this report to help guide your municipal decision-making. It's good to see your faces again, at least some of you, after meeting with you back in the summer. I want to say that municipal staff, Parks Canada staff, and Banff staff in particular have been most helpful in supporting this work. So it's, the research, I think, went well. And I really enjoyed putting this together for you. I should also say I'm recovering from cold and flu, so if I lose my voice or cough, please forgive me. It's been going around, obviously. The report's a lengthy document, so I won't go through it in detail this morning. It's some 40 pages. However, there are some things that I'd like to highlight for your benefit. The first thing I want to emphasize is, and this is no surprise to any of you, Jasper has a unique context. And this unique context has implications for setting up a planning and development department. So this report's intended not only to guide budgeting decisions in the short term, but to provide extensive information as a resource that will help inform negotiation of the Parks Canada agreement, recruitment of staff, and the setting up of a planning and development department. Taking over development approvals means that Parks Canada would no longer be involved in individual development applications at the site level, but they will remain involved at a policy level. And under federal legislation, the minister or his delegate would continue to exercise significant authority. So they're, quite simply, they're not going away. They're going to be very much involved because they have an interest in how, obviously, how the park overall is managed, but then also in how the municipality is managed and developed because of its unique role within a national park. I also would need to point out that Part 17 of the Municipal Government Act, that's the Planning and Development Land Use Control section of the MGA, would not necessarily apply. Because the authority for local land use control will be derived from the agreement with Parks Canada, not from the provincial legislation. I appended to the report a pretty lengthy excerpt from the Banff Agreement, which describes their planning and development, and I'll call it enabling authority. Their enabling authority comes from the agreement, not from provincial legislation in this case. So it's really important to keep that in mind. However, there would be a significant gain, and that would be the ability to oversee and manage the application and approval processes, and ensure the local residents are getting the level of service that meets council's expectations. Now, let's talk a little bit about the role of a municipal planning and development department. I think this is important in your considerations. Obviously, development services is a key role. That's administration of the land use bylaw, administration of architectural design guidelines, and issuance of development permits. That's really important. But also, there's building services. And right now, building services are handled by Parks Canada, with inspection services delivered by a couple of agencies that are authorized or accredited by the Alberta Safety Codes Council. The recommendation would be for Jasper to actually engage in issuing development or building permits along with development permits. So your residents, your property owners have a one-stop shopping, to put it simply. And that would require that Jasper enter into a quality management plan with the Alberta Safety Codes Council to become accredited. And from there, enter into a contract with a qualified agency to deliver building permit services through the municipality. This is a very typical mode of delivery of building permit services in Alberta. Most Alberta towns contract with a qualified accredited agency. They entered an agreement, they share revenues. And usually, there is a clerk within the municipal organization that receives applications, makes sure that things are properly transmitted to the accredited agency for reviewing plans and approving plans, and ensuring that inspections are done and paperwork is filed. So that's the development aspect, development services and building services together. The other aspect, or the other role of a planning and development department, is, we'll call it long-range planning. And those are community plan reviews and updates, architectural guideline reviews and updates, land use bylaw creation and updates. So those are key. And then the other aspect, there's an additional aspect, and that's supporting other municipal initiatives where planning expertise would support council and administration. When I read your strategic plan, I saw that there were a number of items, perhaps a majority of items in your strategic plan that are, that would benefit from planning involvement. The planning expertise could be brought to bear in the sense of implementing those priorities. So having a planning and development department with that expertise in-house would be a benefit to council and the rest of administration. I'll touch a bit on financial. There's a pretty extensive financial section in the report. I always want to caution that it's impossible to draw direct comparisons between municipalities. They're all different. They all have different circumstances, all have different needs. But the comparison data creates a picture of normal costs and staffing complements. The recommended structure reflects these norms, while also recognizing that the planning function is likely to take on a broader role in Jasper with interactions with Parks Canada, local community engagement, the focus on the Jasper strategic plan and other similar matters. So with the idea of having a senior manager of planning and development, an experienced development officer and admin assistant who would provide support to both of those, but also help run the building permitting process, that's a fairly typical structure, I would say. And I think, in a little bit longer term, depending on workload and needs, I would recommend considering the hiring of an additional planner to round out the department. And yeah, I should talk a little bit about the recruitment. Well, actually, so in terms of next steps, recruitment is a critical step. I've spent a fair bit of time talking about qualifications, skill set, the kind of conditions that there are for success in recruiting a person. You need an experienced person who is a big-picture thinker, a quick learner, somebody who likes positive change. Those are quite important. But I think at the same time, Jasper offers a very unique opportunity for a planner. It's like Banff over 30 years ago. It's a once-in-a-career opportunity to establish a department in a high-profile location. And there are significant, there would be significant rewards associated with working for the municipality of Jasper at this point in its history. So I think that we need to keep that in mind. You should be able to attract high-quality candidates. But you want to make sure you're getting the best person who can fulfill these requirements. Obviously, setting up the department is the next step. You need policies, procedures, a rates and fees bylaw, and also establishing a culture, a culture of public service within development. You will need to create a land use bylaw, and obviously, the most straightforward approach to that would be to take the existing land use policy and turn it into a land use bylaw. You're not going to make a lot of changes to your land use districts as they've been handed to you, certainly not at this point in time. But you do need to have a bylaw with the administrative processes and other things built into it. You need to, I would recommend that you investigate building permit services, working with the Alberta Safety Codes Council. And then a little bit longer term, you're going to need to update the community plan. The Jasper community plan is essentially Jasper's municipal development plan, to use municipal government act language. It doesn't mean it has to be called an MDP. It could still be called the community plan, but that plan should be reviewed and updated. These are all going to require individual attention and council approvals over time. So as I've already said, there's a list of 20 recommendations in the executive summary. These range from a big picture to specific. These are provided, well, the recommendation is to receive this report for information. So your administration will go back and review and examine and choose whether or not to act on these 20 recommendations. But the intent is to ensure that Jasper is well-prepared for a successful transition. And with that, I would recommend that you proceed deliberately, step by step, and ensure that you are ready, but then move to establishing your planning and development department. At this point, I want to, I'd be pleased to answer the questions of council members. I didn't want to spend a lot of time belaboring the details of the report, but I do want to address any questions that you might have. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much for your report, Mr. Flutman. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Waxer?
Yes, you made reference to our strategic priorities and the benefit of having a planning and development lens to that. I wondered if you could provide an example.
Yes, give me one moment, please. So the strategic plan has a number of key goals. These include community health, fostering a healthy community, relationships, communication and engagement with residents, and collaboration, housing, environment, and advocacy. So when I look at these, community health, fostering a healthy community, planners will pay attention to healthy community by emphasizing things like active transportation and walkability. Relationships, the obvious one there is that creation of plans involves public engagement. So there's communication and engagement and collaboration. So that's, the creation of plans is an opportunity to strengthen community if the public consultation process is well-designed. Obviously, housing and planning have always had a relationship. Environment, planners pay a lot of attention to natural and cultural environments. And so again, disaster prevention and mitigation, not building in hazard areas, for example, active transportation, and advocacy for pursuing a resort municipality status. That's something you're going to talk about in the context of a community plan. So I think all of these would be supported, at least in part, by in-house planning staff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. A great report, and I haven't had the opportunity to really go through it with the fine comb. But reviewing the recommendations, what's in front of us currently in budget is the planning and development manager. You know, maybe some of us might feel that it's premature, but I just wanted to bring that up with you here in front of us. Do you feel that moving forward on many of these items, like as I'm reviewing, is pending getting a dedicated personnel to start, to lead the charge? And do you feel that if we were to wait till, you know, 2024 budget, you know, not much of the executive summary would move forward, or sorry, of the recommendations would move forward without that dedicated personnel?
Thank you for that question. There's a judgment call to be made here. How quickly do you move? Do you need a new, do you need to hire a manager in the first half of 2023? Or could you get by with doing it in the second half? I think that's a conversation that you would end up having with your chief administrative officer to figure out the best way forward. However, my concern is having someone in place reasonably early so that they can start assembling the nuts and bolts, quite simply, so that a transition could happen in 2024. You need to have structures in place. You need to have policies and guidelines. You need to have application forms, and you need to know what you're going to charge in terms of rates and fees. So there's a lot of organizational work that has to happen for an effective transition. And then, having worked for six or seven municipalities myself, and been a CIO myself, I know that, and having functioned through disaster situations even, I know that municipal organizations are sized for their normal day-to-day workload. There isn't a lot of reserve capacity to take on something like this. People will end up doing it off the side of their desk, and it's not going to get done effectively. But if you bring one or two people in as new recruits and say, here's your mission, and here's your job for the rest of the year to make sure that we're going to have an effective transition, then I think that will help set you up for greater success than if you let it go until you absolutely needed them to produce or to process out development applications.
Okay, thank you. And to follow up that, to follow that up, do you see that same, or sorry, manager, you know, for two, three, four years down in the future? Or is this some of the preliminary stuff could be contract that work?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear most of your question, but are you suggesting that you could wait, or are you asking if you could wait to hire somebody for a couple of years and contract the transitional work?
I'm not suggesting that. I was just, I guess, asking the question, is some of the transitional work, could that be contract work? Just throwing it out there, but...
Okay, yeah, we're having troubles with your connection, but that's a fair question. Actually, it could be contract work, the creation of planning and development policies and rates and fees and other things like that could absolutely be contracted out. It wouldn't require to, it wouldn't be absolutely required to have somebody in place in-house to do that. That's something for you and your CIO to consider.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Melnick, I see your head up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I just wanted to indicate how impressed I was with the report in that, how well it's laid out. It, step by step, takes council and administration through the processes to get to where we would be able to be able to take over some land use planning and development. And quite nicely articulates how we need to look at this from a budget point of view. And as we're going to be reviewing some of this in next week, I think this is a great document that gives us a much more background and perhaps background for the community to understand this transition that's been passed for a number of years by the community is something you just don't do overnight. There's multiple steps and processes and government regulations that have to be satisfied in order to be able to have this as an undertaking. And I just wanted to say I'm very impressed on how this was laid out. I did have one question though about the commentary about the 1968 regulations, and you referenced it a couple of times in the document, about new umbrella regulations being developed and expected to be complete in 2023. Would you be able to expand on that so we have a better idea of what that might look like?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I very much appreciate your kind comments. And I'm glad you find the report thorough and well-laid out. That was absolutely the intent from the beginning. Unfortunately, I can't really answer that question with any great insight. Parks Canada advised me that they were working on these umbrella regulations and seek to update them. There's been a bit of a, between the original Jasper Town Site or Town of Jasper zoning regulations on the land use policy, there's kind of a fuzzy relationship there in my mind in terms of what really applies and how they apply. The umbrella regulation, I presume, is going to more clearly articulate the federal government's interest in local land use control. But that's really all I can tell you at this point in time.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I had one question. Besides the salaries for these departments, is that the only expenditure? Like, that's the only money you can spend is on salaries, or is there other? In that $520,000 to $643, is it just salary?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, it's not just salary. That would be salary. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, it's not just salary. That would be salary, salaries, benefits, pension, training and travel, office expenses, telephone, computers. It does not include office space. So that is a that is a notable exception. And I I understand that that could be a bit of a concern for you because you don't necessarily have space to house these people at the present time. So you would have to make arrangements for that. There's also a certain amount of amount of money included for other contracted services which could be legal. It's quite common to use to to get legal advice on on development questions, especially when when enforcement is a concern. If you if you need to issue in order to require somebody to do something. Working with a lawyer is generally recommended to make sure that the process goes well. You you also want some room in your budget to to hire engineers or planners to do specific things to to support your development initiatives. And and from time to time, you're going to need to spend money on updating your documents now. A new land use bylaw, you could probably manage with your your regular annual budget. If you're doing a major new plan of some kind, you'd probably be seeking grant funding or other capital budget funding to 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 do those things. So it's it's but it's intended to the these budget numbers are intended to represent the the normal annual operations of of a planning development department.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions from council? Thank you very much for your report. Do I have a counselor? Going to make a motion to receive their report information, Councilor Waxer? Anyone who understands a question, all in favor? Thank you very much, Mr. Blutman.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Wonderful day.
You too.
All right, moving on to agenda item 7.2, Community Development Director's Report. I will pass over to our Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through the council. Yes, before you see actually my first director's report to you. And it's chock full of many really fun things and many really important things. And you know, of course, I don't want to read it out verbatim, but if there are any questions that council may have, I'm I'm open to that. And yeah, if you're prepared to accept for information, then the report is as it stands.
Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Reed. It's good report. I'm curious about the off-leash park extension and relocation grant application. Are we planning to move the dog park?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor Keller. The short answer is yes. Right now, the dog park is a temporary or off-leash park is a temporary location on Trans Mountain's right of way. And there are certainly some restrictions and compromises that come with that location. There is a location, there are several other locations where the the off-leash park could be. And if we were able to get some support, we could put that off-leash park somewhere better than its current location. There are some you know, access problems. There's no water at that site. So we do provide trucked water through the through the summer. But moving that park could increase our service to the residents and visitors. So yes, that's one of the things myself and my team are always doing as we discussed in recent days, fund development. And speaking with representative from Trans Mountain about the impacts of the pipeline project on our community through many sort of avenues. There is a a possibility that Trans Mountain may come to the table with enough funding that it enables this project to come forward quicker than in the capital plan we can come up with. I I should be clear that the fund we've applied to typically only grants $5,000. So you know, I have my fingers crossed and my cautious optimism as ever, but the cautious part is quite high here. I just want council to know that that is in the possibilities of future work that may occur in our community.
Councilor Waxer.
I first of all, wanted to express excitement and appreciation for the fact that 44 athletes enrolled in the Junior Lifeguard Club. As a parent of three children who grew up through that program, it's a very important program and I think has huge benefits lifelong for the athletes involved. But also importantly, I think it bodes well for future staffing for the for the Aquatic Center because it's such a it it I think it is a natural progression toward working as a lifeguard. So I think that's wonderful news. And then if you had anything to say to that, I had another comment and I wonder if you could speak a little bit about the library of things because I don't think that's come before council yet. And I think that's an exciting development.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall through to Councilor Waxer. So the 2.1, 44 youth in Junior Lifeguard Club is definitely wonderful on its own as a program. And the secondary part of that is we absolutely do hope that some of those youth will then blossom into staff. And we do have a program called Zero to Hero right now that is aimed at at creating more lifeguard instructor staff for our facility. It's a it's definitely the feeder to that that on-ramp into becoming a staff. And yes, having local staff is is always a a target of ours. And you'll see at other places in the report, staffing is definitely one of our challenges. Certainly, the childcare center. You can't create a Zero to Hero program in-house for childcare staff. They require, you know, an accreditation that we can't create in-house, whereas we have the capacity at the pool to start at Junior Lifeguard Club, as you pointed out, and then run those those youth through all the programs that they would need. We can do that here in town with our with our capacities. And the, oh, I've lost the second question.
Library of things.
The library of things. Thank you very much. I apologize. So library of things is is absolutely what it is, the library of things. So things right now range from some of the examples I can give. There's the countertop mixer that not all residents may own. There is a set of booster cables that not all residents may own, but may need to use that one time to get their car that was frozen. There's a small set of tools. There is, I'm just trying to remember from the last time I saw the list. But that gives you a sample of what we're looking at. And it is not right now full of, say, outdoor gear. Because in our community, we already have that capacity. What we're looking at is meeting the needs, especially of those you know, most vulnerable or or close to being vulnerable. So something like, oh, there's a dehydrator, food dehydrator. So a great opportunity for someone who maybe can get some food through various mechanisms that we have in town. And then we have a food dehydrator so that they could go on a backcountry trip with that food they've dehydrated themselves. And they don't need to own that machine because we can share it in the community. So right now, what we're doing is getting the what you might say is the legal side covered. So the waivers, the training program and, you know, brackets, insurance, but to make sure that we are, of course, covering the the butt of the municipality and our staff while we still can work to provide this. This is not a program that we've invented. It's a program that we believe through especially community conversations, the need has been expressed repeatedly. I wish I had this. I wish I had this. I wish I had this. And you know, again, with our community mix, it's a great opportunity to provide people with a one-use thing, much the same as the library. You borrow the book, you enjoy the book, you put the book back. And so it should be coming soon and it will be able to, you will be able to go online. The same way you can book swimming lessons, you'll be able to book the food dehydrator or you'll be able to do it right at the desk at the activity center. And that, I should mention, is where the library of things will be housed for now, as we see how it unfolds. Any other questions?
Councilor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Great report. Acronyms are always fun to work with. ELCC strategy. I wonder if you could expand on that to what that exactly is?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through to Councilor Melnick. You know, I did try to take out the acronyms. And in my efforts to make it one page, because that was one of our goals as directors, we want to be able to give you a one-page report. I left a few in and one of them is ELCC, which is Early Learning and Childcare Strategy. So that's a report that council funded and that report is nearly done. We are in the final polishing of it. And we are working to look at how to present that to council. The consultant team from the U of A that we used has actually been poached by other organizations. So the people that made our report are no longer with the university project that that housed that research. So we're working at whether or not perhaps Ms. Daniel will present that or or I will, or we can maybe pull one of them back to present it to council, but we're in the final polishing right now. And then the other one I will mention is ECC, which is Emergency Coordination Center. So that was during the Chedmond events. But I I think that those are the only two acronyms that I include.
Great. And just continue. I have a couple of other questions, one being you make reference to the weekly program regarding our youth. I think it's the rec room. Any plans for that to expand to more frequency during the week or or during the month?
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Councilor Melnick. That's a great question. And one of our, one of the great things about my team is that we're kind of constantly evaluating the best delivery method and and we try new things here and there. And we take the knowledge gained from the the attempts, whether they were successful or or perhaps they they fall a little flat. And yes, we are looking at ways to change this program. Because when you get to that number, you're now at the same staffing crunch we have across the room or across the the division, rather. So yes, we are looking at different options and perhaps taking what we call youth now and splitting them into two age groups for certain events and then bringing them together as a large group because there are some real benefits. I mean, I have, I don't know if council has poked their head into rec room ever. But but I've poked my head in. And what you see there is just a beautiful snapshot of how to build community. You know, they share sort of an age, you know, the youth section of this, but they don't really share everything. And so to see them doing a bead workshop one week and then doing the pumpkin carving the next week. It's really, it's a wonderful way to see the youth beginning to build that same level of engagement with each other, even though I don't know you today, I'll know you tomorrow. And so it's a really beautiful thing that when it's 50 to 70 kids, there's a lot going on. And if we can staff it that way, we'd like to staff it that way. But location is partly the challenge too at the Legion, which I have to say, the Legion has been a wonderful partner. But we have space concerns. So so yes, we are, the long-winded answer comes down to, yes, we are absolutely evaluating other ideas. Thank you for that.
And just a last question. It isn't specifically in your report. But as we've come out of COVID and now gone through the summer, you allude to some staffing concerns. Are we back to our facility schedules? The way we were skating and the aquatic center, the curling ring, are we back to if I use the term pre-pandemic, that might not be the right way of putting it, but we're pretty well maxed to the hours that we can operate when I guess there's a demand for for the facility.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through to Councilor Melnick. Absolutely correct. We we have returned to the service profile that we would have seen pre-pandemic. Now, when I say that, we're not exactly the same because just as we would do with a specific program like rec room, we also do with all of our operations. We look at and in fact, you may remember a couple of months ago, we we had the pool open at 6:30 some days. And we just didn't get the usage. So we're we're back to seven. But that's again, constantly evolving our program offering to meet the needs of the residents. So yes, we are back to what we would call regular operations. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Councilor Waxer?
The other thing I thought was probably important to do was to express appreciation to Glenda, the great who has really ensured that this soup's on program has been able to to can to be ongoing. And I was thinking about it the other day and realizing that it may in fact mean a reduction in her business, but her contribution or her belief in community and desire to address that has is really commendable and very much appreciated. And I just think it's important that that be said publicly.
Thank you, Councilor Waxer. I have a couple of comments and a question. And I did, you guys asked all my questions and said all my comments because I also expressed huge gratitude to Glenda. I'm, as a parent of a child in hockey and a coach, I'm at the arena, you know, four to six times or the activity center, four or six times a week. And that soup's on program is, I see people, I see newcomers with kids, I see you know, high school kids at lunchtime, I see locals. It's a really wonderful, wonderful program right beside the food recovery fridges which are very busy. Again, there, I feel like I live at the activity centers. So and I and I I feel it's it's busier and there's a really nice feeling in there compared to before, just with that soup area, the bread is always, it's it's wonderful. The staff shortages, mostly in childcare, is the center able to be at full capacity for children? Are they are they not able to take as many as they could because they don't have enough staff?
First of all, Deputy Mayor Hall, thank you for your great comments. And Councilor Waxer, I will certainly pass it on to Glenda. I mean, I think we all bump into Glenda fairly often. But yes, without her, we wouldn't be able to do that soup's on the way it is. We'd probably be able to do it two days a week, but her contribution absolutely makes a difference. And then all of the businesses that have shown up daily. And I love the other day, I was there having soup myself with one of my staff so we could have a quick meeting and still also nourish ourselves. And that soup actually was was brought by the food class at the high school. And I just thought that was a real, a real joy to see that even again, our youth are engaged in the fabric of community. It's a beautiful thing. And the you speak of in general, the activity level and the feel in that building. And I absolutely agree. And I'm really proud of the staff for the way that they have embraced you know, and some of the lessons we learned from Chedmond. So we moved coffee connections partly because we moved it there for during the Chedmond outage. But we kept it there because we're meeting new people and seeing more numbers. And yeah, so it is likely or hopeful that the volume of people through the facility then can compensate for these extra services that we're adding in that facility. But to meet council's stated strategic priorities, meet people where they are, support the vulnerable while embracing them as part of our community. And yeah, it is a wonderful thing to see. I I agree with everything that council has said, and I appreciate the comments. I will take it back to staff and and Glenda for sure.
Thank you for that. And just my question.
I didn't remember at the very last minute, Deputy Mayor Hall. So about childcare. The impact right now is most acutely felt at out-of-school care. We are able right now to keep our ratios at the childcare center, Wildflowers. Uh, uh, the impact is felt, we are limited at out-of-school care right now. Um, and we are hopeful, I know that, uh, Ms. Daniel is doing interviews this week. So we're hopeful that we have some, some, uh, excellent candidates to add to our team. And again, my cautious optimism always exists, but the reality is that, that facility especially, uh, but it extends to every one of, every part of my operation. And you'll remember in other divisions too, where getting staff is a challenge, it's still, uh, ongoing for the last, uh, however many months and years to the pandemic. But, uh, we are, we are doing well, uh, to be flexible and rotate and, and pivot is the word I think is most commonly used. But, but the out-of-school care is feeling it for sure.
Thank you for that, and I also want to note, I'm very excited to see the work being done in Ross and Park and Lions Park with the ice services. So it looks like they're getting close and I can assure you that the youth that play hockey are very excited to go play at Lions Park. Um, one more question about the library of things, it's not quite going yet, is that what I'm understanding? Do you take donations from people in town if they want to donate a mixed master or whatever?
Great, uh, great question Deputy Mayor Hall, first of all, thank you and I will shout out of course to operations there, the ones doing the work. And, uh, I really do appreciate their efforts, uh, it's, it's really wonderful to be again, in a collaborative team. Um, but the library of things, one of those deals about liability and protecting risk is we are currently not taking donated equipment. We had a small grant that allowed us to buy new and, and right now that is the strategy. So if there are any residents who think, oh, I have a set of booster cables that I'd like to donate, we're not currently doing that. Um, there is the possibility in the future, but right now we're just trying to open with this level of, of certainty. So thank you for that question.
Thank you very much, as I left my house this morning to come to council, my daughter had taken our mixed master to her friends last night to make cookies. So I, it was like, maybe one day she can just get one from the library. Council Waxer?
I, I, in retrospect, I, I feel bad that I neglected to appreciate all the businesses and restaurants that are providing the soup as well. Thank you. Thank you very much today.
Great, thank you very much for your detailed reports, any other exhaustive questions? If any councillor, uh, wants to make a motion to accept the report for information, councillor Keller Rempe, all in favor? And that report is received. Moving on to agenda item seven point three, an energy benchmark report, I believe we have. Was on the line, oh, awesome, great, good morning, how are you?
Good morning, everyone, I'm doing good, I hope you're all as well. All right, um, okay, so I'm just gonna present the energy benchmarking report. Um, it was, uh, conducted a few months ago and I'm here to just talk about the high-level, uh, findings from the report and what is it useful for and how are we gonna use it to implement some of the things we've seen in there? I'm presenting the report for information to the council. Uh, a little bit of background, as you all know, Jasper partnered with the town of Hinton to receive a grant for, uh, the municipal energy manager position and a part, one of the deliverables is to actually conduct an energy benchmarking report. The energy benchmarking report is, um, sorry, uh, the energy benchmarking report basically, uh, looks, compares the, uh, facilities of the municipality, their energy consumption with their peers in Alberta and, uh, across Canada to see where they currently stand in terms of energy consumption and energy costs and what are the opportunities and where should we focus our time? So it's kind of like a guidance for us to, uh, look at the information and see where is our time, uh, and money well spent in terms of reducing energy costs and, uh, energy consumption. So in order to do this report, uh, all the municipality facilities, the natural and natural gas and electricity data between twenty nineteen to twenty twenty were evaluated and we picked twenty nineteen as the year to compare and benchmark the facilities because we wanted to avoid any, um, COVID-related shutdowns that would have given us a inaccurate result. So the first step was actually determining, uh, which are the major en- energy consumers and we identified seven facilities. Uh, we have the activity center, the fitness and aquatic center, the sewage treatment plant, the pump house, operations facility, municipal library, and then the emergency services building. So if I'm quickly gonna talk about the results of benchmarking and these are a high level for all the seven facilities put together. You can, uh, re- look at the individual facilities in the report, it's detailed, it's broken down. It talks about all the inputs that went into estimating the, these numbers. Um, so, so all the facilities are benchmarked on three different units. The first one is a energy use index, which is basically the total energy that, that's electricity and natural gas used in the entire year and that divided by the size of the facility. Um, you can see Jasper is right at the median for compare, uh, benchmark against facilities in the same climate zone. Um, the energy cost index is the same thing, it's the cost spent on energy, uh, divided by the square meters. And once again Jasper is on the median compared to all the facilities. Uh, so being on the median kind of shows that, well, we are not, um, the best in class, neither are we bad, so we're doing something good, but there's a lot of opportunity to actually improve our performance. And then finally, energy cost, uh, per occupant. Uh, this is the total energy cost divided by the average number of occupants, uh, in the facility that use the facility, you know, that visit the facility. And this, and this, we are on the higher side, uh, compared to the similar facilities in the, um, similar climate zones. And what it can indicate is maybe some of the buildings are either overcrowded. Uh, it can indicate that maybe we are, you know, running heat or cooling, uh, overnight when there is nobody in the facility. So things we can look at to actually identify, uh, why this is on a higher, higher end. And then a, a simple breakdown of the energy use, you can look at that, uh, nice little, uh, pie chart there, kind of breaks down into what are the major users of the facility? Uh, just to give us an idea of where we can focus and what would, where we would see the most savings from. You can see aquatic center and the, uh, activity center together are one of the highest ones, followed by the sewage treatment plant and the pump house. So I want to bring our attention to that, uh, targeting building for further assessment, where you can see a nice big square and there's a small, multiple smaller squares. Uh, and my wonderful colors in the red, green and white. Um, the size of the box is basically the relative size of the facility and the color just indicates whether we are on, um, top performer or a bottom performer compared to peers. This is some, this is a tool that can be used to identify where we should actually start evaluating more, uh, looking at, um, upgrades or op- operational improvements and whatnot and, uh, places where we can actually see a lot of savings, uh, or there's a potential for a lot of savings. The municipality, like I said, is median, there is three, about three facilities, which is the activity center, fitness center and the operations, uh, building that can see a lot of improvement, but we also have the municipal library and the EMS, uh, building, which are one of the top performers compared to the province. And then finally, just a quick, uh, translation of these savings into numbers. So what can we presumably save if, uh, we try to target all, um, try to bring all of our, uh, facilities into the top performers? So there's a little bit table there based on what the ta- target savings are. Um, you know, you can save anything from three thousand to fifty thousand annually, depending on how many things we implement. And we also need to identify the opportunities, some might be low-cost opportunities, some might be, uh, you know, just a few operational or maintenance changes, but others might actually be maybe some upgrades to improve the energy efficiency of equipment. And then the last one is the, uh, annual greenhouse gas emissions from these top seven facilities. So the total emissions is about three thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine metric tons annually from these seven facilities. And what does that mean? I like that little, um, infographic on the side, it kind of gives us an idea of what does, uh, you know, three thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine metric tons of CO2 mean? Cause really, it might not mean anything but just numbers if you don't look at what, what actually is, so. Fifty tankers of gasoline equivalent, you know, heating, um, eight hundred and seventy-three homes, uh, thousand, thousand forty-two passenger vehicles. So that's the total emissions from these facilities, um, that we're seeing, uh, in twenty, that we saw in twenty nineteen and that we would probably see in the future years if we didn't start reducing the emissions and the energy performance. But yeah, that brings me to the end and, um, uh, yeah, I, if you guys have any questions, I can take that and if not, then, uh.
Thank you very much, are there any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Keller Rempe?
Thank you for your report, it was very informative. Um, what would we need to do in order to reduce the big areas that are in red, like the fitness and aquatic centers? Is that due to the light, lighting in the, uh, facility? And what would, what would you see as an improvement there?
So the one thing that we did do right off the bat was something called an energy scan, um, which, which was conducted with the facility operations and the maintenance folks. And we identified about forty-four to forty-five opportunities across the activity center and, uh, um, uh, the, uh, aquatics and fitness center. So the opportunities can range from, we have categorized them into low-cost, uh, no-cost opportunities, some employment engagement opportunities and capital upgrades. The low-cost, no-cost ones can, are simply looking at, uh, areas where maybe there is heating, um, when, when there is no occupants, so maybe including things like occupancy sensors or, uh, scheduling the B M S to, uh, reduce heating and cooling needs overnight when the facilities are not occupied. So that's the he- the heating and ventilation, the H W A C is one part. Uh, lighting is another, replacing lights with, uh, L E D lights will also contribute to the electricity savings. Then when we are also talking about heating, um, things like improving the building envelope, making sure we're not losing heat through, uh, draft and improving insulation can also add to it. Those were a few more things that we did identify. And, uh, in the aquatic center as well, there is opportunity again to improve equipment, uh, in the future. Maybe could consider a combined heat and power kind of system that may be used. Uh, but yeah, these are, these are the different opportunities that you can implement in these facilities.
Thank you, I'll take you down Glenda. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council, councillor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, I'd like to go back to page sixty-eight on our agenda. Because it's a very interesting, is it sixty, is it sixty-five, sorry? That pie chart. Um, and just if you can explain, it, you know, we've got, we've got the red and, uh, then we've got certain areas where the inner circle and the other outer circle. Can you explain how this, uh, is, is visually breaking out the energy and how it relates to each of the centers? I, I'm just finding it, uh, hard to follow, um.
So the.
Representing.
Sorry about that. Um, so the inner circle is basically dividing them into categories in which the database, uh, that currently exists with clear result where the technical support, they have their database and their facilities are divided into certain categories. And the inner circle is just, you know, breaking them down into those categories. So the rec center is one category and Jasper has two, uh, facilities that kind of fall into that category. That is the fitness and aquatic center and activity center and so on for the other ones as well. The, the water is divided into the pump house and the sewage treatment plant, um, and, and so on. The outside circle is showing the contribution of each of these facilities to the total pie, um, in, in terms of how much energy they are consuming, if that makes sense. I hope I answered the question.
Uh, thanks, that, that helps to explain that a little bit more, um. Also, you had on the next page down, the municipal library is a very vibrant green. Um, I take it that's because it's a lead standard building and we, it has met all the various energy measurements?
I, I would believe so, yes, uh, since it is a, a lead standard building, it is, uh, it meets all the energy efficiency requirements and comparing to the peers across Alberta, it's one of the top performer performers. So, uh, again, going back to the fact that, well, why we are using this report is kind of tells us, it might not be fruitful if we start looking at making the municipality library more efficient. It's probably worth our time looking at the fitness center or the activity center.
And, and just the last, um, part, uh, of the question and, and I understand Director Reed, you're, you, you may not be quite prepared to answer. In your report, you mentioned that the renovations are moving along in the recreation center and so on. From this reporting, have we gleaned anything that we can incorporate in the current renovation? I will say envelope, because we also recognize that there's a budget that we have to stay at. And can we incorporate some of the findings on this report into that redesign of our, of our center?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Hall through to Council Melnick, uh, absolutely. Um, we, we will definitely take this as we work that project into deeper design. I will mention that, uh, most of the work in that project doesn't have a lot of opportunity to change our, our footprint, so to speak. We're looking at, um, longevity of the facility and, uh, operational, uh, effectiveness and service levels. Um, however, uh, the idea in general about keeping a facility longer and, and I would go to Mr. Khan for, uh, perhaps some, some support on this statement. But the longer we keep a facility, the better its embodied carbon is, is used. So our efforts will go to a better environmental result. Uh, but, and, and we will definitely take this report as part of our, uh, background information as we go forward with that project. Um, something like, uh, pool pumps or pool filters, when we replace them, we will look to use the best energy efficiency models we can find within, of course, our budget as ever. Um, um, so yes, to answer your question, yes. And then I would ask Mr. Khan if, if, uh, keeping our old buildings is, is a good environmental choice as I have suggested.
Uh, so, yes, it, 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 well, I, I, I would say I'm, I don't know a hundred percent, but yes, I, I do believe it would be a better choice. And to add to that, um, upgrades like to the, uh, to the ice plant and, and, uh, such things will definitely improve the, uh, performance significantly. Cause now you have newer, more efficient equipment or running and that can directly have an impact on the electricity usage at the aquatic, sorry, the activity center as well. So, uh, I haven't seen the detailed design of the upgrades, but from the little, uh, here, things that I've seen, uh, overall, it should have a positive impact on the energy consumption at the, uh, activity center.
Thank you very much, uh, any other questions or comments from council? Well, thank you very much for the report. Um, do I have a councillor that would like to make a motion to accept this report for information, councillor Melnick? All called a question, all in favor? Report is accepted, thank you very much for us, have a wonderful rest of your day. Moving right along to our motion, agenda item eight, motion action list. Jeffrey, do you want to speak to this?
Certainly, thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, uh, so before you, you do see our updated motion action list. Um, you will see. You will see that we are getting to three pages now and that is because we have been given lots of good tasks by council. So if there are any questions about any of these, I can certainly take them back to each director. But we are just, you know, pursuing the goals that council gives us on these, on these items. So yeah, I'll defer to any questions from council.
Thank you very much, Director Reed. Council have any questions? Counselor Keller Remy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I just want to say thank you. I see the House of Commons hall sounds there on there and I'm very pleased to see that.
I noticed that as well and thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions regarding our motion action list? The counselor will take a motion to receive this list for information. Counselor Keller Remy, all in favor? And the motion action list is received. Agenda item nine, counselor, upcoming meetings or reports? Anything to report? Counselor Keller Remy?
Last Thursday, I attended Never Been Meeting and we chose our auditor for going forward for the next three years. Last Friday, I attended the TransCanada Yellowhead Highway Association meeting. And we will, we have a one day stretch plan on January twenty, twenty twenty two. And this Friday coming up, I am pleased to report that I will be attending for the first time. I think it's the first meeting of the new committee for employment and immigration.
Thank you, Counselor Keller Remy. Any other reports from counselors? I can report that two weeks ago, I sat in on a school age community conversation, which was wonderful. I could have actually said everything I wanted to say during Director Reed's report, but I saved it for now. As a parent of a school age child, I only have amazing things to say about our drop in programs and our, our chaos and our, our youth programming and just huge appreciation for Tor, Anna and Carla and I think getting forty to seventy youth a week in a space and we don't even have a youth rep center, I think speaks volumes for your staff. So please pass that on. I did learn just kind of trending, kids just really have nowhere to go. The loss of the theater has been, has been quite hard. So I, I feel that these programs are, are, are really helpful. Lots of mental health issues in our, our community with our kids. We've lost a couple of community members in the past few months, parents in particular. And so I just seem like outreach workers are, are working hard and to find resources and help them. Are you? Another thing that came up at the conversation was regarding a school bus. So we have the school bus that comes in the lodge daily now, which is amazing. And a few parents, sons who are the outline parts of town, Stone Mountain, are also going to start advocating for a bus potentially in town, which I think makes a lot of sense, especially when you, anyone ever drives by the school in the morning on a drop off and there's tons of cars and kids and I feel it would be an amazing safety measure. I'm not sure if that's our job, but I just wanted to put it out there because it was brought up. Youth are very excited about the ice surfaces and the two parks and you know, again, reference and that one also. Thank you. Oh, another thing, I actually, this isn't part of my duties, but I did attend last Thursday and I'll be going again this Thursday from noon till two at the arena. There was a Learn to Skate for newcomers and it was wonderful. There was about thirty adults on the ice. I helped tie skates. I helped stand up. It's a wonderful thing, what our, our settlement workers are doing, helping people that move to town to settle into our community. A lot of them didn't even know there was lakes you could skate on. And yeah, it was, it was really, it was really fun and I'm very much looking forward to Thursday again at noon. And if any councils want to join me, I can certainly be some pointers and I'd stop on your skates. And that's all for me. Looks like we are, don't have anything else to report. Upcoming events, agenda item ten. NMO will be held on November twenty third at Martin Basin. The Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Holiday Party, December second at the lodge. I feel like this might be the first one in a couple of years. Am I correct on that? I, I wasn't the last, there wasn't the last year, okay. This is the first full on one in a couple of years. The World Tree Lighting is the same evening at six, so you can head over to the tree lighting and then head out to the lodge for the chamber party. And our community holiday party is being held on December sixteenth at the activity center. I'm very excited about that and I encourage council, make your hair appointments and get yourself all dolled up for the, for the party. And anybody else have anything to add for upcoming events, Counsel Melnick?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this weekend is the start of, is it Moonlight Madness? Great opportunity for residents to support businesses in the community looking for gifts for those gift exchanges, which I'm sure are going to happen at the numerous Christmas parties. As well, just a reminder that a week today, we'll be back in council chambers at nine o'clock. It probably is on our website, but just a reminder that we do have council deliberating utility rates and continuing on with an update, I believe, to changes that we suggested to be put in the budget. But no final decision has been made. So it will be another, I'm sure, long day starting at nine AM.
Bring your snacks and your protein shakes and your coffee and we'll settle in. Anything else you report, Counsel Wilson? Are you saving turtles down there and having a great time? Love it. All right. Agenda item eleven, do I have a counselor who would like to make a motion to adjourn? Counselor Keller Remy? All in favor? And that has passed. We are adjourned at ten forty seven AM. Have a wonderful rest of the week.